2시간 되었습니다.
It's two o'clock now. We will soon start the Forum in South Sea and South Central regions of ROK in the 2021 UEA YOSU Summit. I'd like to ask all participants to come inside and take your seats.
다시 한번 안내드리겠습니다.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's time for us to start the forum on South Sea and South Central Region. I'd like to ask all participants to take your seats.
2020년 더 시원경이
Ladies and gentlemen, we're now starting the Forum in South Sea and South Central Region of the 2021 UEA Yoosu Summit. I'd like to ask all participants to take your seats. As you take your seats, please make sure that your mobile phones are on vibrate mode. Due to the social distancing regulations of the pandemic, today's forum will be participated by pre-registered people only. I'd like to ask for your understanding. Quarantine measures have been conducted in Seoul and we will observe all quarantine rules. I'd like to ask all participants to keep wearing your face masks.
예, 정대 정리가 된것 같습니다.
It seems we are all ready to start the forum. Now we'll start the Forum in South Sea and South Central Region of the 2021 UEA Yoosu Summit. I am Lee Sang-hun, the chairperson of the COP28 Hosting Committee, today's emcee.
정해도 불구하고 오늘 포럼에
I'd like to extend my gratitude to all of the distinguished guests for participating in this forum for South Central Region of the South Coast despite their busy schedules. This forum is being held to host the COP28 and to host the COP28, 12 cities and counties of the South Central Region of the South Coast are now renewing their commitment and sharing their best practices for net zero during this forum. Now, I'd like to introduce distinguished guests who are representing the 12 cities and counties. Mayor of Yoosu City, Kwon Oh-bong is here. We are also joined by the Hadoon County Governor, Yoon Sang-gi. Thank you for coming. Namet County Governor, Chang Chung-nam is here. And Jinju City Deputy Mayor, Shin Jong-woo is also here. We also have Saechan City Deputy Mayor, Hong Min-hee. Goseong County Deputy Governor, Lee Ki-bong is here. Suncheon City Deputy Mayor, In-che Young is here. Gwangyang City Deputy Mayor, Kim Kyung-ho is here. And we are also joined by Gohun County Deputy Governor, Cheong Ha-yong. Boseong County Deputy Governor, Park Woo-yuk. Gure County Deputy Governor, Lee Guang-dong. Thank you all for coming here. Now, I'd like to open South Central Region of the South Coast Forum with the opening speech of Yoosu Mayor, Kwon Oh-bong. Please give a big round of applause.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for being here. I'm the mayor of Yoosu. So, we have organized the 2021 UEA Yoosu Summit. And as part of the summit, we have also organized the Forum in South Sea and South Central Region with leaders of local governments in this area. I'd like to thank the distinguished guests for joining us. I also thank everyone joining us online, including via the Yoosu Story channel of YouTube. Once again, I'd like to extend my gratitude to all citizens joining us online. Now, today's forum was possible thanks to the efforts of Mr. Lee Sang-hun, who's the emcee of the forum, chairing the committee to host the COP28. We have Yoon Sang-gi, the Hadoong-gun County Governor, Chang Chung-nam, Hong Min-hee, Deputy Mayor of Saechan, 백두현, 백두현, the Governor of Goseong County, Deputy Mayor, In-che Young of Suncheon, Deputy Mayor of Gwangyang, Kim Kyung-ho, Deputy Governor of Cheong Ha-yong of Gohun, and others for being here. So, the UEA Yoosu Summit is being organized in order to discuss ways to achieve carbon neutrality by leaders of more than 50 cities across the world. And the local governments in the South Sea and South Central Region are taking this opportunity, show our commitment to hosting the COP28 by conducting best practices and become model examples. Now, this region is the optimal place to host the COP28 with its beautiful environment. Now, the climate crisis is an issue of the human race's survival. And this region needs to work together closely to successfully meet the challenges. We have to put forward new solutions to climate crisis that is threatening the entire human race. I hope today's forum can be an opportunity to strengthen the cooperation among local governments in this region and renew our commitment to hosting the COP28. Once again, I'd like to thank all participants. Thank you very much, mayor. Next, I'd like to invite Mr. Yoon Sang-gi, the Governor of Hadoong County, who is also chairing the South Sea and South Central Region Development Committee. As he comes to the stage, please welcome with a big round of applause. Good afternoon. I'd like to congratulate you on the successful organizing of the 2021 UEA Yoosu Summit in order to build sustainable cities based on carbon neutrality. Yoosu Mayor, Kwon Oh-bong and leaders of local governments have closely worked together. Today, we have the Deputy Governor, Lee Guang-dong of Gure County, who also made a lot of efforts. Despite the COVID-19 pandemic, it is great that we have successfully organized today's forum so that we can meet in person and discuss critical issues. The global pandemic is a serious warning of nature that is related to climate crisis. We have to realize the urgency of this crisis in world quarter to successfully meet the challenges. About 10 years ago, then President Candidate Moon Jae-in promised that he will join the efforts of local governments in this region to host the COP28. At that time, the governors of Cholla Nam-do Province and Gyeongsang Nam-do Province also promised to work together to host the COP28. So, that was a significant occasion where the unity between the east and the west of the country was also illustrated. Now, the importance of protecting the environment is growing more than ever and hosting the COP28 will be an opportunity for us to suggest the vision of east-west unity and sustainability. And I hope that the conference will be hosted by this region. I also hope that the UEA Yoosu Summit will be a stepping stone to successfully hosting the COP28. And for that, I'd like to ask for your support. If we pull our wisdom and work together, we will be able to achieve the goal. I'd like to ask all relevant institutions for their interest and support. I'd like to ask all of you to make the same wish. Thank you very much.
Now, you are the first presenter of the next session, so please wait on the stage for a moment. So, we'd like to start the first part of the presentations by five cities and counties of the south Gyeongsang province. And after having 10-minute break time, the south Cholla province, six cities and counties of south Cholla province will make their presentations. And after that, I would like to make some declarations to host the COP28, followed by a group photo session. Now, I'd like to ask for your kind understanding. This forum has been planned to last until 4 o'clock and at the 4 o'clock, there is this opening ceremony for this summit. So, you have to keep to the time limit. Five minutes have been allocated to each city and the county. But as you can see, Mr. Governor, you can see the clock in front of the stage and please make sure you keep to the time limit by taking a look at the clock during your presentation. Once again, please keep to your time limit. We have to be punctual. Now, the first presenter would be Yoon Sang-gi, the Hadoong County Governor.
Thank you very much for that introduction. Once again, I'd like to congratulate you on the successful organizing of the UEA Yoosu Summit. Now, Hadoong County has been creating zero-carbon belt in more than 11 villages in the county. Despite the pandemic, we understand that creating zero-carbon villages and successfully meeting the challenges of the climate crisis is more important than ever. We have set the goals of building zero-carbon villages with the vision of sustainable cities. And these zero-carbon villages were designated based on the support and participation of the residents. They are now growing into energy-independent and self-sufficient villages. We will continue to develop this initiative so that the Hadoong County will be an attractive venue of ecotourism and create revenue sources for its residents. Hadoong County has beautiful natural resources such as the Songjingang River and Mount Ji-ri. Hadoong County also has a green tea field that does not use any pesticide. I'd like to invite all Koreans and people of the world to Hadoong County so that they can experience the eco-friendly landscape of Hadoong County. Let us take a short video clip on Hadoong County developing as a place where humans, nature, humans and nature coexist. humans and nature coexist.
Well, that was the ARPIS of Korea. Hadoong is called ARPIS of Korea. And the video was so spectacular and beautiful and was all the more impressive to all of us. Now, Jinju City is the next presenter. So the Deputy Mayor of Jinju, Shin Jong-woo, please come up to the stage for a presentation. So you have five minutes. Please bear in mind that you have five minutes. And please give a big hand to Deputy Mayor Shin Jong-woo.
We're glad to see you all. My name is Shin Jong-woo. I'm the Deputy Mayor of Jinju City. Of course, our mayor should have been here. This is a so important event for us. But because of his tight schedule, I'm here on his behalf. I'd like to ask for your kind understanding. Jinju is the central city of this southern block. And I'd like to extend my gratitude to Yosu Mayor Kon Oh-bong and Yoon Sang-gi, Chairman of the South Central City of South Coast Development Council. Thank you for your hard work to host the COP28. Now, I'd like to make a presentation about this eco-friendly green city, Jinju. Jinju is the central city of this southern block. Let me introduce Jinju first and then we'll explain some of our activities to host the COP28. And Jinju is emerging as the central city in this southern block. And this is the overall information and infrastructure resources of Jinju City. Jinju City is a city of culture, art, and education. It has this pristine natural surroundings of mountains, lakes, and others. It has just greened resources, making it the best eco-friendly city. And Kaecheon Art Festival is being held in Jinju, showing the sophistication and cultural prowess of this city. More recently, the aerospace, bio, and ceramic, and other future industries are being developed in Jinju City. Their history, environment, and culture are being intertwined with one another in Jinju City. So this is how we will pursue this goal of becoming eco-friendly greened city. We have this wonderful Nam River Project along with the Chinyang Lake Renaissance Project and greened bike road building along with the response to climate crisis. So we are basically pursuing Green New Deal to become net zero by 2050. So, one of those initiatives is the wonderful Nam River Project. We are creating the eco-friendly historic city along the Nam River. We are restoring Chunyungyang within the Jinju Fortress. And by recognizing the historic value of the Jinju Great Battle Plaza and others, we are creating this very plaza space within the historic sites along with various projects and initiatives to develop the historical value of Jinju City, making it the best livable city in the zone based on our green infrastructure. And our second initiative is the Chinyang Lake Renaissance Project. Chinyang Lake has this natural, very pristine nature. And surrounding the Chinyang Lake, we are building a park, amusement park, and other leisure facilities for families and tourists. The third initiative is bike road building. Jinju City is a city for bikes, connecting bike roads surrounding the city. We are trying very hard to build this infrastructure and the road for bikes so that it can become bike-friendly city. We are connecting all the bike roads across the city while making artery roads for bikes. The fourth initiative is this building response system for climate crisis. With the opening of hydrogen charging station, we are deploying hydrogen cars across the city along with other transport projects so that we can facilitate this green transport economy in the southern block. Of course, the low-emission boilers for households and the incentives for low-carbon projects will also help Jinju City to become low-carbon green growth city. And these are activities we are doing for COP28 hosting. In December 2019, we started this commission to host the COP28. And up until now, we are carrying out a campaign to receive signs to host the COP28. And I believe that this opportunity can be a time for us to take a step further to host the COP28. And Jinju City will try to join the drive to host COP28 by collecting wisdom and insights together. Thank you so much for your attention. Well, there are 12 cities and counties participating in the COP28 Host Committee. And the Council of South Cholla Province and South Gyeongjang Province, the assemblies of South Gyeongjang Province and South Cholla Province are also participating in this Host Committee by taking a lot of activities together. And on October 6th, in the Gongdam Hotel of Jinju City, there will be another gathering where we will conduct activities to host the COP28. And I'd like to ask for participation of the 12 cities and counties. I'd like to thank Jinju City Deputy Mayor for being a host. And please send us your continuous support to host the COP28. Now, I'd like to invite Hong Minnie, Deputy Mayor of Saechan City, to the podium for a presentation. Please give a big hand.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to ask for your understanding. As the Mayor of Saechan is not able to join this forum due to his prior commitments. First of all, I'd like to thank Mayor of Yosu, Kon Oh-bong, and Yoon Sang-gi, the Governor of Hadoong, for making joint efforts in this region. Now, responding to the climate crisis should be a part of our everyday life. I believe that the 2021 UAE Yosu Summit will be the first step towards a long path towards successfully meeting the challenges of climate crisis. And now, I'd like to introduce the city of Saechan's response to climate crisis. Now, Saechan accounts for 70% of all production in the aerospace manufacturing industry. Now, the city is the center of industrial complex specialized in aerospace and aerospace MRO industry. Saechan also has beautiful natural resources. In 2018, we opened the Saechan Marine Cable Car. Despite the COVID-19 pandemic, more than 2 million visitors have used the cable car so far. More than 85,000 visitors have come to see the Aramaru Aquarium, which is the fifth-largest in the country. Saechan also has a natural forest with cypress trees that are more than 40 years old. We have more than 21 rooms and campsites that are gaining popularity among people across the country. Moving on to the city's plans for carbon neutrality 2050. In order to actively respond to climate crisis, Saechan is reducing pollution. On March 9th, Saechan closed two coal-fired power plants. And we are improving air quality by establishing emission-reduction equipments in the factories. And we are also supporting drivers to dispose of aged diesel vehicles with the city's subsidies. The city is also supplying eco-friendly boilers for households, smart new and renewable energies, and is also conducting greenhouse gas emission reduction projects and creating forests that block fine dust. Now, there are three major initiatives to respond to the climate crisis. Saechan has conducted solar power generation project based on citizens' participation. The solar panels are established in the unused landfill site of Sadeun. The citizens made investments in the solar power facility and have earned more than 8% profit annually over the last three years. Saechan is also conducting a project to turn food waste into biodiesel. This will lead to the reduction of methane gas emissions and increase efficiency in resource utilization. There are many other initiatives such as reusing ice packs, beachcombs, and is melting green curtains. Now, Saechan City will continue to make efforts for sustainable development and successfully meet the challenges of climate crisis with the goal of carbon neutrality 2050. And will also join forces to successfully host the COP28. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your presentation on Saechan, which is a center of the aerospace industry in a city with the harmony of land and sea. I believe that Saechan is transforming itself into a eco-friendly city. Next, I'd like to invite Mr. Chang Chung-nam, the Governor of Namhe County.
Please give a big hand.
We're glad to see you all. My name is Chang Chung-nam, and I am the Namhe County Governor. First of all, it is truly an honor for me to be here with you at 2021 UAE Yosu Summit. My gratitude goes to Yosu Mayor Kon Oh-bong. I sincerely hope that we can host the COP28 two years later. And I also hope that as the leader of this South Central Region of the South Coast, Yosu Mayor is doing a wonderful job. And next year, we have this expo in Hadoong. So I have a, I wish you success for it, Yoon Sang-gi, who is the Hadoong County Governor. So our county, Namhe County, has this annual CO2 emission of 98,000 tons. We don't have any factories. So we are one of the counties that have very lowest CO2 emissions. Still, our emission amounts to 98,000 tons of CO2. In our travel to Yosu City, we all rode vehicles to come here. And those cars also emit that CO2. We have to think about those points when we try to cut back on our CO2 emissions. Every year, Korea emits 900 million tons. As of 2018, amongst CEOP members, Korea ranks 11th in terms of CO2 emissions. And among OECD members, Korea ranks 5th. Right now, the central government has this target of reaching that zero by 2050. That means we have 30 years to go before reaching this target. And Namhe County has this perspective. In the 1990s, compared to the 250 million tons of CO2 emissions in the 1990s, now we have this 728 million tons of CO2. This means that we had this great increase of CO2 emissions. So we have to think about what we have to do and can do for the next three decades. We have to take a stock of the current CO2 emissions from where and what kind of climate response project should be implemented with how much of budget and effort and how much awareness do we have about the climate change and the crisis? And what kind of measures have to be implemented to reach the goal? These are the points that we have to think about to reach the 2050 target. Namhe County, to become the leader in this initiative. In 2002, we joined this collective drive to reduce the carbon emissions. And then, we passed the county legislations to allocate budget for this effort. And to increase capacity, we are sharing information with the private sector and other counties. Next year, we have this general election for local authorities along with the presidential election and the... and the decarbonization and the net-zero initiative should be included in the campaign platforms of the candidates for the general elections for the local authorities. We will define the emissions target every year to make a response to the climate change. That is our plan. Well, these letters are so tiny, so you may not be able to read them. So let me just read to you. In eight areas, we have thirty-six projects to respond to climate change. For sustainable growth in the future and to realize the net-zero society, we make suggestions like the followings. But since due to time constraint, please read our reflect. I will not read out them to you in the interest of time. And lastly, next year is the Year of Visit to Namhe County. And to promote this campaign, I’d like to play a short video clip. With this, I’d like to wrap up my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. That was Chang Chungnam, Namhe County Governor. That was a great presentation. It was like a short lecture about climate and net zero. I was able to feel the passion and commitment of Namhe County Governor. Now is the last presentation of the first part. Goseong County Deputy Governor Lee Ki-bong, please come to the stage for a presentation.
Mr. Goseong.
It was Mr. Goseong.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Actually, I’m not the governor of Goseong. I am the deputy governor, Lee Ki-hyun. The governor was actually supposed to participate in this forum, but because of an urgent issue, he was not able to make it here. I ask for your understanding. I’d like to first of all thank Mayor of Yosu, Kwon O-bong, and the governor of Haddong, Yun Sang-gi, for successfully organizing this forum. I’d like to ask for your understanding for not preparing a presentation. But I’m going to explain what the Goseong County is doing to meet the climate crisis. Goseong is a beautiful coastal city with the historical resources of historical and natural resources. Now, the county has secured eighty-million won of budget for commissioning a research on carbon neutrality roadmap. So with the research, we will be able to establish the timeline to carbon neutrality in ten-year plan, including the targets for different sectors. Now, the central government is yet to specify 2030 plans, but the overall direction won’t change. So Goseong County decided to move proactively. The county has eight qualified power plants now in operation. These plants are now emitting nine-point-six-million tons of carbon. In the first half of this year, the coal-fired power plant number one and two have been closed, and the others will be closed in phases by 2028. Goseong County will make effort to accelerate the phase-out so that we can reduce emissions more quickly. And we will expand the use of renewable energy. First of all, we will establish a hydrogen fuel cell power plant in order to contribute to the transition of hydrogen economy. We’ll also establish a wind power plant, and we’ll establish LNG bunkering cluster in order to reduce pollution from ships. This initiative includes eco-friendly ship repair and renovation site, and it’ll be complete by 2024. We’ll also push for other initiatives to reduce emissions in the industry and increase energy efficiency in buildings. Fourth, we’ll closely work with civil society organizations so that carbon neutrality can be implemented in our daily lives. We will increase the share of reuse recycling from thirty percent to fifty percent, and we’ll conduct many campaigns, including Zero Waste Campaign. We will restrict the use of disposable goods, plant trees, encourage riding bicycles in order to engage individuals and businesses. And the Goseong County will also encourage tourists to take interest in carbon neutrality and, in particular, hosting COP28. I hope these efforts will lead to the East-West unity and success in hosting the COP28. Last but not least, I’d like to invite you to the Kyungnam Goseong Dinosaur World Expo 2021 in the Tangang Pool, which is the first site of Admiral Yosun Shin. Thank you very much.
Mr. Lee Ki-bong, Deputy Governor of Goseong County. Thank you very much for joining us, and I’m sorry for confusing you with the governor. This is the end of Part One, and we are going to have a short break. And as I told you earlier, we have to finish this forum by four o’clock, and we are about fifteen minutes behind the schedule. So I’d like to ask you that we have a very short five-minute break before we start Part Two of the forum. See you in five minutes.
I’d like to start Part Two. So we had five presentations in Part One, but we have one more presentation, so I guess six presentations in Part Two. And we are also slightly behind the time schedule, so I’d like to alert you to the time limit for each presenter. And please keep to the time limit. The first presenter is the deputy mayor of Suncheon City, Im Che-yong. Please give a big hand.
My name is Im Che-yong. I’m deputy mayor of Suncheon City. Our mayor really wanted to be here, but because of the unexpected circumstances, he couldn’t come here. So I would like to make a presentation on his behalf, and please understand. I’d like to ask for your kind understanding. Before making a presentation, let me first congratulate the hosting of the 2021 UEA Yosu Summit. I’d like to express my gratitude to Yosu Mayor Kwon O-bong for having hard work, doing hard work for COP28 hosting. And my gratitude also goes to the Haddong County Governor Yun Sang-gi for chairing our South Central Region Commission. Now, I’d like to start a presentation about Suncheon City’s policy examples to host COP28. So we have this catchphrase, like that we are living in a giant garden. So we are hosting the Global Garden Expo. This is a very large global expo, and we will do our best to have a successful hosting of this Global Garden Expo. So this is how my presentation is structured. We’ll first talk about the basic direction of Suncheon City along with our brand power and best examples of climate preservation and 2050 net-zero achievement. Suncheon City is located at the central part of the Southeast Region of Chullae Province. We have this two-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand people. We are a very great livable city where urban environment is integrated with rural environment. We have so many things to boast. As you well know, we have Suncheon Bay and this National Garden and this folk village called Nagantown Fortress along with very famous temples like Nagamsa and Sonamsa. So this is a brand power of Suncheon City, so basically I’m showing off my city. We have this international body, the East Asia Lumsar Center for the region. And in 2016, 2018, we were recognized as the child-friendly city by UNESCO. And our Sonams Temple has been inscribed as the UNESCO World Heritage Site. And we are also recognized as the first Lumsar wetland city. And this Suncheon Bay Wetland has been inscribed as World Natural Heritage. In 2003, we opened this first Library of Miracles, and we are the first city to host the Global Garden Expo in 2013. And after two years, in 2015, we have this first National Garden. And I think this is relatively less-known fact. We account for seventy percent of the royal azalea production and twenty-five percent of the plants that grow in a very warm climate come from our region. The hooded crane, about three thousand hooded cranes, come to our city every year. So we are also known as a city of cranes. So these are the best examples of preserving the environment introduced by Suncheon City. For the past four, eight years, we have this initiative to plant ten-million trees. By 2022, By 2022, we are planning, uh, we are planning to plant 2.3 million trees. And I believe that all in all, we will be able to plant 10 million trees, which will contribute greatly to the decarbonization. In 2023, for six months, we will be hosting this Suncheon Bay International Garden Expo. And we are expecting that about 8,000 tourists will come to our region. And to preserve this wetland, we are making various efforts. Among the inland wetlands, I think Suncheon is one of the rare examples that preserved a pristine state of its coastal wetland. In 2006, our coastal wetland has been inscribed as, included in the Ramsar Agreement. And in 2020, the wetland has been inscribed as the UNESCO World Natural Heritage. And we have this 2050 net zero goals. By 2030, we are planning to reduce greenhouse gases by 35%, 70% by 2040, and 100% by 2050, the final target year set by the central government. So this concludes my presentation. Thank you so much for your attention. And I hope that since many mayors and county governors are making so much effort, I really hope that we will be able to host the COP28 in Suncheon City. We'll try to play a major role in this effort. Thank you so much. Yes, so you are living in a very big garden. Thank you for your great presentation. We'd like to move on.
Next, we invite the deputy mayor of Gwangyang. Please welcome him with a big round of applause.
Good afternoon. My name is Kim Kyung-ho, deputy mayor of Gwangyang. I'd like to thank mayor of Yaosu, Kwonobong, who is successfully organizing the UEA Yaosu Summit and this forum. I'd like to also thank governor of Hadoon County, Yun Sanggi. Governor Chang Chung-nam of Namet County. Also, we're successfully leading the local governments in the South Sea and South Central Region. Now let me make a presentation on carbon neutrality and climate change safety city. I will start from general background to best practices. First, general background. Gwangyang City became a member of the UEA in 2013. As a member city, it has forged a partnership with the UEA. Gwangyang has the world's number 11 international trade port, Gwangyang Port, and the world's best steel mill specialized in steel sheet for vehicles. And Gwangyang has beautiful natural resources with the Samjingang River, the Mount Shili, and the South Sea. Moving on to carbon neutrality initiatives. The Gwangyang City plans to reduce emissions by 24.4% by 2030 compared to 2017 levels and achieve net zero by 2050. We will expand the EV charging infrastructure and hydrogen charging infrastructure in order to reduce emissions from the transportation sector. We'll encourage citizens to use bicycles and conduct green remodeling of public buildings. In particular, we will build carbon-neutral public buildings in turning the roofs green. We also used waste resources as energy sources. For example, by turning food waste into biodiesel. We will also expand new and renewable energy supply with solar panels in environmental facilities in the areas around the Suo Dae. We'll build forests that block fine dust and create urban forests that will work as greenhouse gas sink. Moving on to citizens initiative. In order to engage citizens to participate in carbon neutrality initiatives, we are conducting public campaigns. Moving on to response to climate change. We are building the capacity to manage natural disasters, including the establishment of smart flood management system and smart urban flooding response infrastructure. Moving on to water management. In order to improve water circulation soundness, we will utilize buffer reservoir area and ecological blocks and reuse of wastewater. We also restore ecological streams and create ecological parks in the Madong Reservoir and Wow Reservoir. We also restore Usanam Ecological Forest, Dongnei Ecological Forest, and the Chungdong Area that was degraded. We'll protect the social groups that are susceptible to climate change. And we also protect citizens from air pollution by establishing fine dust traffic lights and air quality billboard. Let me introduce best practices of Gwangyang. We are building a smart city with ecological platforms, smart clean shelters, and shared bicycles and wireless charging stations. As I have explained, the Gwangyang pursues the harmony between development and environmental protection. With the goals of carbon neutrality and sustainable development, we will continue to implement various initiatives. And last but not least, we, I hope that this region can host the COP28. Thank you very much.
Well, that was the deputy mayor of Gwangyang City, Kim Kyung-ho. Thank you for a great presentation. After listening to presentations by cities and counties, I believe that the net zero by 2050 is a goal that will be achieved. And the next presentation is about Goheun County. And I personally have a very deep attachment to Goheun County because I live there. Please give a big hand to the deputy governor of Goheun County, Jung Ha-yong.
Great to see you all. My name is Jung Ha-yong. I'm the deputy governor of Goheun County. First of all, congratulations on the opening of 2021 UEA Yaosu Summit. I'd like to extend my gratitude to the Yaosu Mayor, Kwonobong, for his hard work to successfully host this conference. Now I'd like to briefly introduce our county, Goheun County, which is a village of art without roof. First of all, Goheun County is the southernmost county of the Korean Peninsula. We have this 64,000 population. It is a very livable city, very, even though its scale is a bit small. It has 220 pristine islands and this Lia's Beach of 740 kilometers. It has a very mild temperature with the spectacular nature. So because of these natural resources, it is the number one tourist destinations in this region. Also, our county is the first Korean county that has this aerospace center, which is called Naro Space Center. We are the county that is promoting the development of this sector. And we also have this high-quality pomegranate and the, uh, the lemon. Now let me introduce our county, what it looks like. We have this resources like this whole island. This is the place where you can see the strong commitment of Marianne and Margaret who worked for patients with Hansen's disease. And we have this museum called Yonghong Museum. This is a very beautiful museum, even though it is very small. And we also have a Suk Island, which is also called Edo. You can see the very beautiful nature throughout the four seasons. And some tourists are calling that this is a sacred garden for themselves. As a result, it was designated as one of the 33 islands that people want to visit during their vacations in 2020. There are so many other things that I want to show off, but in the interest of time, I would just show the images of those things that I want to boast. Goheun County is also famous for the great dishes. It is a superb county, both in terms of style and the taste. And visitors of Goheun County, they are so happy to visit our county. And their willingness to revisit our county is very high. To preserve these strengths of Goheun County and the natural environment, the Goheun County government has introduced various measures. Firstly, it has this Environment Framework Act that encompasses its natural resources and other types of resources, including these distributing bio-degradable fishing gears for our fishermen and other measures for humans' nature and living in space. This is the theme of our policies. And to achieve these policy goals, we are creating this tree-lined street and improving the living environment of our residents so that our residents can really feel the impact of the county government policies. And on October 22nd, at the Naro Space Center, we are, this Nudi satellite, the Revarquet, will be launched, which has been developed with the homegrown technology of Korea. Please look forward to this event and pay attention so that it can be a very successful project. Once again, let me express my congratulations to the successful hosting of 2021 UEA Yaosu Summit. And I root for this tour of South Central Region of the Southern Coaster Region to host this COP28. Thank you so much. That was the county, Goheun County Deputy Governor Jung Ha-yong. Thank you for keeping to the time limit. We'd like to move on to Bo-seong County. Bo-seong County Deputy Governor Park Woo-yuk will come to the stage for a presentation.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Park Woo-yuk, the deputy governor of Bo-seong County. First of all, I'd like to ask for your kind understanding. For the governor of Bo-seong County is not able to participate in this forum due to prior commitment. Now, Bo-seong County actively supports the hosting of COP28. Actually, we have joined the Development Committee much later than other local governments, but we will be more active than others. Now, Bo-seong County has about 40,000 population. And each of them are enjoying the wide space that is 248 times larger than the citizens of Seoul. Let me show you a short video clip. In the last 10 years, the average temperature of Bo-seong was 12.5 degrees Celsius. And the precipitation is increasing faster than the average precipitation increase of the Chulnagye Province. With climate change, precipitation is expected to grow continuously. That is why we need urgent response to changes. So these are the media coverage of the climate adaptation cases. We have created salt marsh and supported the agriculture of subtropical fruits. So let me give you some concrete cases. First of all, subtropical fruit trees. We are supporting farmers of passion fruit and apple mango. It is effective, it has been effective in import replacement, job creation, and increase in farmers' income. The second case is the creation of fine dust blocking forest. We have planted 33,000 trees and plants, including meera squier, in an area. It's larger than three hectares. The third case is the creation of salt marsh in the mud flat of Bo-seong. In July this year, the Bo-seong Mud Flat was registered as a World Heritage in the UNESCO. We are now pushing for mud flat restoration and creation of salt marsh. With the keywords of ecology, culturality, and rest, we have established the comprehensive master plan for the development of the county. And with the keywords of nature, health, and assurance, we have also established the environmental protection master plan. We have also set seven areas and detailed targets, including health disaster and so on, in order to successfully meet the climate crisis. Thank you very much. So that was Deputy Governor Park Woo-yuk of Bo-seong County. Let me now invite Deputy Governor Lee Gwang-dong of Gurye County.
Well, I'm seeing that you are now speaking a big round of applause. Please give a big hand, even though it is becoming tiring. Well, great to see you all. I'd like to introduce our county, Gurye County, which is a space where nature breathes.
which is a space where nature breathes. Congratulations on the opening of twenty twenty-one UEA Yasu Summit and I sincerely hope that our region can be the host for COP twenty-eight. Kure County has this three major attractions and three major duties. So let me briefly explain our county. If you look at the tiny zip by Yijun Land, you can see the introductions of Kure. Its three major attractions means there's Jiuri Mountain, and Samjin River, and the Kure Plain. These are three natural wonders of Kure County. And three beauties refer to the splendid landscape, abundant crops, and big hearts of its residents. Kure County is a land of beauty. Kure County is a small village, but it has these three major attractions and three major beauties, where the thousand years of culture and history coexist with each other. This is the Saseong Am, where there was a flood. The water went up to the Saseong Am, which is five hundred meter high. So it was reported in the media. We are also a space where people's minds can be healed. We are located along Jiuri Mountain, but unusually, we have a very low amount of snowfall during winter. Well, Kure County has this forestry which can absorb CO2. From two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty-three, we have been building Jiuri Mountain Garden surrounding the Chicho Peak. We have this Kure Tanica Garden with the size of two hundred eighty-one hectares. It would have more than five hundred types of plants and nine hundred types of wild flowers. Starting from two thousand fifteen to this year, we are planting pine trees and other eighty types of trees to build bigger forests, ecological forests in the Kure County. We are also working for the net zero by building the forestry surrounding our county. So we don't have to introduce all the detailed policies of the, for net zero, because we are already the county which is very closer to net zero and we are introducing the practices which will be helpful for net zero. Thank you for your attention. Now, we'd like to move on to the last city. This is the host city, Yasu City. And Konobong, Mayor of Yasu City, will come up to the stage for a presentation. Thank you so much.
So I've listened to the presentations of ten cities and counties. And they are making a lot of efforts to meet the challenges of climate crisis. And I am impressed by the beautiful nature we all have. And listening to their presentations, maybe Yasu would have the largest challenges. Now, Yasu has the petrochemical industrial complex that emits a lot of CO2. That's why we have a lot of work to do to achieve carbon neutrality by twenty fifteen. Back in twenty twelve, Yasu organized the World Expo with the theme of Living Ocean, focusing on the conservation and protection of the maritime environment. So I believe this is in line with our efforts to host the COP twenty-eight based on the cooperation among local governments in this region. Now, in the Gwangyang Bay Area, the CO2 emissions amount to eighty-two million tons per year. That's why we have to work hard to reduce emissions. What is fortunate, however, is that the industrial complex can produce a lot of by-product hydrogen. The amount of by-product hydrogen produced in this industrial complex is second-largest following Ulsan. Now, the by-product hydrogen is being used by many businesses. And they, and many companies have plans to start producing gray hydrogen and green hydrogen, which creates an advantageous environment in the shift toward hydrogen economy. Last year, we established a hydrogen charging station to encourage the adoption of hydrogen dual-cell vehicles. Now, one of the goals of this forum is to host COP twenty-eight. Many people talk about east-west unity. And I believe if we successfully host the COP twenty-eight altogether in this region, it'll be the model example of unity and an opportunity for the central government to show its commitment to balanced growth across different regions. Considering the strong commitment of the residents in this region, I hope that the twelve local governments will continue to work hard to host COP twenty-eight. Back in nineteen ninety-eight, Yasu established the Cholla-Nam-do Province Green Environment Support Center for the first time in the country. In two thousand and eight, Yasu declared itself as an international climate protection pilot city. In twenty thirteen, Yasu established a local action plan on autonomous reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. In twenty twenty, Yasu enabled the agreement to shift the main fuel from the bunker sea oil to LNG in the Yasu Industrial Complex. And this year, we have declared carbon neutrality targets. As of twenty seventeen, Yasu's CO2 emissions amount to about thirty-eight million tons of CO2 equivalent. Our target by twenty fifty is to reduce about twenty-one million tons of emissions through energy transition and another thirteen million tons of CO2 through industrial emission reductions. And we also have a target for twenty thirty, which is to reduce thirty-five percent of emissions compared to twenty seventeen levels by expanding the use of eco-friendly vehicles, reducing the fine dust emitted from diesel vehicles, and establishing solar power plants. This year, we closed one coal-fired power plant and will phase out others. And as I explained earlier, the Yasu Industrial Complex will shift the main fuel into LNG. And we will become a leading city in the production of green hydrogen. We'll implement local action plans for the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions and conduct other initiatives such as citizens' green lifestyle in order to create low-carbon city. And we'll actively play our roles in the local government's coalition for carbon neutrality. Now, many businesses actually find it difficult to achieve energy transition in the complex. However, there are more benefits than disadvantages, especially with the support of the local and central governments. And Yasu is actively conducting campaign to host COP twenty-eight, both online and offline. The hosting of the twenty twenty-one UEA Yasu Summit is part of those efforts. We have organized this summit online and offline with many leaders of the UEA member cities. I hope this year's summit will be helpful in convincing UEA member cities that this region is optimal for hosting COP twenty-eight. We have to see whether Korea will be designated as the host country for COP twenty-eight. If there is no decision made in this year's COP, COP twenty-seven, the many countries and cities will have to bid for the next COP. In that case, we will have to submit a bid so that this region can host COP twenty-eight based on the cooperation of twelve local governments. The city of Yasu promises that we will continue to make efforts for that. Thank you very much.
Well, that was Yasu City Mayor Konobong. Thank you for a great presentation. South-central region of the south coast can be a great candidate for COP twenty-eight host. It has great infrastructure and it has very clear goals for net zero. So that was the impression I got from the twelve presentations of cities and counties in this region. Eleven counties, excuse me. When this south-central region of the south coast has become, really becomes a host of the COP twenty-eight, we have to think about how roles should be divided. Under this topic, we'd like to have a general discussion, which was scheduled to last thirty minutes. But since we are behind the schedule, I would like to reduce the time for general discussion to ten minutes. And Yasu Mayor Konobong will be the chair of this discussion. And I think if you become very brief, we can make this short discussion very insightful and productive. Now, I'd like to hand over the microphone to Yasu Mayor Konobong. Well, thank you so much. The mayors and governors and deputy mayors, deputy governors are here to brief about their activities to reach net zero by twenty fifty. I feel very encouraged that these cities and counties are doing their part and working very hard. After listening to the presentations, counties and cities all expressed that they support Yasu's hosting of COP twenty-eight. But in fact, this is a joint hosting. This is, Yasu City is not the only host candidate for COP twenty-eight. And I believe that joint hosting will be more compelling and persuasive. Of course, the main venue will be located in Yasu City, but other eleven cities and counties in this region during the COP twenty-eight hosting period will be able to host various events of CO2 twenty-eight so that their residents can feel the impact of hosting COP twenty-eight if we are to become a host. So if you have any opinions or input to contribute, feel free to express during this ten-minute general discussion. Well, let me be the first one to make a comment. Before, I was given just five minutes, so I focused on introducing my city and I couldn't have time to express my gratitude to the other south-central regional, south-central region cities of the south coast. And I believe this Undersea Tunnel project has been passed and the Ministry of Land and Transport has finalized this Undersea Tunnel project. This is all thanks to the hard work made by mayors and heads of local authorities in this region. But especially in the mayors and governors of this south-central region of the south coast, they are the main actors to win this project. Likewise, COP twenty-eight hosting is a possible form, possible goal for us if we can just leverage our infrastructure and facilities. This is a goal that can be achieved because our cities and counties are competitive enough. And we are blessed with so much resources. And we also have very excellent environment policies. In this regard, we can become a very great competitive candidate, host candidate for COP twenty-eight. So this is an opportunity for us to renew our strong commitment to COP twenty-eight hosting. And making the first step would make the halfway through the journey. So I am very certain about a successful hosting of COP twenty-eight. But that was the spirit. I believe that with that spirit, we will be able to host COP twenty-eight. Is there anyone to have, who wants to make some comment? So we are here to discuss how we divide the roles when we really come to host COP twenty-eight. But before that, we also have to put thought onto what kind of efforts should be made to really host COP twenty-eight in this south-central region of the south coast. We have to come up with more effective and practical measures to actually host COP twenty-eight. Of course, we are making hard efforts, but winning the right to host the COP twenty-eight should come first. And I think it is too early to tell, too early to discuss how to divide the roles because we have not won the right as yet. So we have to assume that we will host the COP twenty-eight to have this kind of discussion. That is a very good point to make. But is there anyone to make a comment? But is there anyone to make a comment?
So as Deputy Mayor Kim Kyung-ho said, we won't be able to discuss the details today because we don't have the detailed program of COP28 yet. And we will have to consider the different circumstances of different local governments. And today, we need to agree on the principle of co-hosting and distributed hosting. I believe we all agree on those principles. And I also believe that the citizens and residents in this region should have awareness on the COP28. For example, the impact and benefits from hosting the conference. That is a precondition for us to encourage citizens to support the hosting. Now, the Yosu has commissioned the research, which includes analysis on the, how we will host the conference in a distributed manner. For example, the eleven other local governments, the role of the eleven other local governments, and ways to link other events to COP28. And as we conduct the research, I hope we could take your comments from all of you. For example, if we distribute the accommodation, then we would need shuttles. And also, we would have to operate cruise ships. And the route of those cruise ships should consist of all eleven local governments. So that's also part of the research. So I'd like to invite you to submit your proposals. So Yosu will make sure that your suggestions are collected and integrated. We all share common challenges in reducing emissions. And at the same time, we share common resources, nature, ecosystem, and diverse initiatives to fight climate crisis. So I believe that the humanity should follow the efforts of the local governments in this region to globally combat climate crisis. So this would be the rationale for this region to host COP28. Because hosting the conference itself will send a message to the international community. So it was a great opportunity for us to more specify our approach to hosting the conference. And this will be the end of the plenary discussion. Thank you very much for your inputs and proposals in the discussion. Of course, winning the right to host the conference is first. But I believe we need to be prepared because they will always ask about how the conference will be hosted jointly in this region. So we need to have answers. For example, utilizing distributed accommodation, event venues, and so on. So we couldn't delay the discussion on that. And I hope you could continue to submit your proposals. Thank you very much, Mayor, for moderating the discussion. Next, based on the discussion, we will announce the declaration of the South Sea and South Central Region. The declaration will be announced by Governor Chang Chung-nam of Nam-hye County and Mayor Konobong of Yosu City. So there are eight items in the declaration. So our two leaders will take turns in reading the items.
So Yosu Mayor, we read the topic of declaration. And please start with the first clause. 2021 UEA Yosu Summit Declaration by Foreman South Sea in South Central Regions of Aroke. First, we, the city, twelve cities and counties in South Sea and South Central Regions of Aroke, recognize our past practices, contributed, accelerated global warming, and thereby work proactively to develop policies to eliminate uncertain risks to the future of the mankind. And second, to recover the environment and realize carbon neutrality, we establish a carbon-neutral cluster for this region and work together closely to achieve the shared goal of sustainable development. Third, to jointly host the COP28 that will bring the east-west integration and the balanced development of the nation, we reinforce our cooperation further and ask the UEA members for full support. Fourth, we raise awareness about climate change in our communities and listen to voices of the youth for environmental protection, preservation, and recovery for future generations. Fifth, we announce without preventive measures in place to reduce carbon emissions and environmental pollution, industries cannot generate profits. Therefore, we have to make them strictly abide by such rules when they apply for business approvals and permits. Sixth, we implement policies that help reduce the use of disposable products and detergents with microplastics and make sure neighboring local authorities to adopt such policies. Seventh, we actively protect the marine environment, wetlands, and forests to achieve the shared goals of preserving biodiversity and making it sustainable. Eighth, we respect the spirit of the UEA signed in 2005 to build a foundation for global cooperation and create ecological and sustainable urban environment and join our will together to put the declaration into action. Thank you so much. Please give a big round of applause to adopt this declaration. So the heads of local authorities, please come up to the stage with the declaration. We'd like to have a group photo session to commemorate this moment. And after this group photo session is over, we'd like to ask all of the participants to the stage for a photo. So we have marked the stage to tell you the exact location, where, to tell you where you should stand for this group photo. Make sure you don't have the declaration form upside down. Please raise one of your hand to strike this fighting pose. One more time. Now, I'd like to invite all of the other participants to the stage. So participants in this conference hall, please come up to the stage. We'd like to take another group photo. Twelve cities and counties in the south-central region of the south coast have come together to renew their commitment to hosting COP28. Once again, thank you for being here with us. I hope that today's forum can be an opportunity for all of us to renew our commitment and will toward hosting COP28. My gratitude goes to the mayors and counties of twelve cities and counties.